And welcome to the council meeting of July 10. I am Deputy Mayor Gladys Blackmore. Mayor Clayton is online, and we will begin the meeting by rising and singing the National Anthem.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts, we see the right, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God, keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Well, thank you very much. I know, Mayor Clayton, you couldn't hear that, but there are many voices. So it was great to hear so many voices raised to sing "Oh, Canada." That is a rare event in these chambers. Number three on the agenda is a land acknowledgement. The city respectfully acknowledges the Beaver Cree, Dene, and Métis people as the original caretakers of these lands and surrounding areas. We are grateful to live, learn, work, and play on Treaty VIII territory within Turtle Island, and acknowledge these lands have been home to diverse and sovereign First Nations and Inuit nations since time immemorial. And that takes us to adoption of the previous agenda. Sorry, the previous council minutes. I would go to councillor O'Connor for that motion, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Blackmore. I'd like to move that council adopt the minutes of the city council meeting held June 26, 2023, as presented.
And I see that a motion is in order. We'll call a question. And that carries. And I would then move to item point five, adoption of the agenda. Councillor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Blackmore. I would move that council adopt the minutes of, or sorry, that council adopt the agenda with the addition of item seven point two. Please chief ratification.
And that motion is in order, and I'll call a question. And that carries. Oh, that was the other one. Okay, let's back up again and vote for the adoption of the agenda as amended.
Councillor Bosch, your favor.
And that carries. This brings us to the delegation portion of the meeting. We have two delegations today. We would first welcome Dion Martin to the center table as our first delegation. Yes, yes, absolutely. Just a couple of housekeeping items. We usually give our delegations about five minutes before we open the floor to councillors for questions. I'd just ask that you start by introducing yourselves, both of you, and just go right, go right at it.
Thank you. I know that mine is a little bit longer. Actually, on the application, it said five to 10 minutes, and I wanted to be at six o'clock, but I respectfully switched to this time. So I'm hoping that you'll allow me to get through all of this. Good afternoon, my name is Dion Martin.
My name is Robin Fries.
There's, there's two mics, sir.
I want to start by thanking those who sit behind me and supported me today. We are a collective group of concerned citizens looking for change. Last time I presented to council was September 6th of 2022. Today's presentation is a follow-up with my main focus on the harms being committed to our children. Crucial information continues to be brought forth by doctors all over the world, by non-woke psychologists and people of the LGBTQ communities. Crucial information that can no longer be ignored by this council. I refuse to be silent because our children and community are in grave danger. Due to this council's lack of, lack of follow-up from my last presentation, I am going to make strong suggestions that I and many others believe are very important to the development and survival of our children and this community. You believe, or sorry, you continue to fail us even after evidence is put in front of you because you are not interested in offering any solutions. I will. I will begin with four questions to council that I, that only requires a raise of a hand. Your response will allow the viewers and I to witness firsthand your knowledge and priorities to our children in this community. In fact, let's have everyone in this room participate. I know you probably haven't done this before. Knowing our children are in harm's way, would you agree it's your duty and ours to take action and protect them? How many of you are aware of the WEF, the World Economic Forum? How many of you are aware of the New World Order Agenda 2030? How many of you are aware that COVID vaccines are causing harm to the human population? So unfortunately, I see there's a few councillors that need to be educated. The past three and a half years have been extremely difficult for our youth that are now experiencing the horrific aftermath of masking, isolation, fraudulent and invasive PCR testing, school closures, online child sexual exploitation, and the force of experimental COVID shots to participate in sports, graduation, post-secondary admission, et cetera. And more recently, the disturbing and criminal push of the sexualization of our children, inclusion and woke culture ideology present in our schools and community, causing a mental health crisis, creating division, depression, confusion, isolation, and suicide. The grooming and indoctrination of these corrupt ideologies opens dangerous doors to abduction, sexual abuse, and child trafficking. It's unbelievable and criminal that the WEF, UN, and our very own governments are legalizing and normalizing the sexualization of children and pedophilia. Just imagine 20, 30 years ago that your parents had to go to your school and ask that pornography be removed from the library. And while speaking to that librarian, they realize this person is a man dressed like a woman. Then they look across the hall and see a student dressed like a cat meowing and entering the bathroom to use a litter box. Yeah, this is happening. How did we get here? What does any of this have to do with inclusion and bettering the lives of our children? It's criminal that Trudeau is trying to push through legislation that will stop parents from allowing children 16 years old and younger to undergo transitional surgeries and castrations. Who is our prime minister really working for? Scary truth, the WEF sworn in in 2015. And to no surprise, so does Kristia Freeland. Did you know she's on the WF's Board of Trustees? She joined in 2019, and she made a surprise trip all the way here to our little city to visit our mayor. Trudeau and Freeland, the number one threat to Canadians as they bend over for the WEF. Let's go further. To this day, our children continue to be harmed by the experimental COVID vaccines as the spike protein is destroying the immune system and concentrating in the ovaries, testes, and organs. Experts here, experts here in Canada and around the world have been expressing extreme concern to the injury and death they are causing. Some of these experts include Dr. Peter McCullough, an internist cardiologist and epidemiologist; Dr. Robert Malone, inventor of the mRNA technology; Dr. Ryan Cole, who's affiliated with the COVID Care Alliance, offering protocols to help the vax-injured; Dr. Paul Alexander, he worked for the WHO and was moved over to the White House to assist with COVID, the COVID pandemic; Dr. Jessica Rose; Dr. Brian Bridle; Dr. Payne, a Calgary pediatrician. He, like Dr. Mackus, wrote the College of Surgeons and Physicians. His 19-page letter includes numerous pages of references and links to support his expert opinion. I will read key points from his letter written on September 14th of 2021. I am a pediatric neurologist and researcher specializing in epilepsy and neurocritical care at Alberta Children's Hospital, ACH. I have a master of public, I have a master of public health from Harvard University, and before returning to ACH in February of 2020, I spent six years on staff at Mayo Clinic where I developed expertise in neuroinflammation. Both medical school and pediatric neurology residency were completed here in Calgary. I am also a father of three young children and remain very much pro-vaccine. While I refuse to take this novel experimental mRNA therapy, my wife, children, and I are completely vaccinated, including yearly flu shots. This is not a contradictory stance as this current mRNA vaccines represent a dramatic departure from using, for instance, live attenuated viruses. Rather, they represent a completely novel and experimental therapy with no long-term data. I am now faced with the impending possibility of an unpaid leave of absence to allow for compliance. I am so disappointed by this extreme AHS coercion. A vaccine mandate would certainly appear to violate individual rights as protected under the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms. Forced experimental mRNA vaccine mandates also directly violate the internationally-accepted Nuremberg Code, which was developed in 1947 to protect patients from medical experimentation. It is because I am informed that I do not voluntarily consent to these injections. As Dr. Mackus stated in his letter to the same college that I read to council last September, his concern at that time was deaths of 32 Canadian doctors since the rollout of COVID shots. His last official update was an alarming 150 dead Canadian doctors. It's criminal that our doctors have been silenced, criminalized, and murdered. Shut off mainstream media and educate yourselves with sources that are seeking and reporting facts, science, and truth before Trudeau's Bill C11 decimates them all. These are druthers. These are druthers that I brought in for you to look at. These should be landing in all local media boxes, free to the citizens. Yet another solution. Some doctors have presented in the US Senate. On June 9th, 2023, Dr. Peter McCullough testifies in the Pennsylvania Senate on request by former military officer Senator Doug Mastriano. Session is co-shared by Senator Chris Dush. Co-presenters include Steve Kirsch, founder of the Vaccine Safety Research Foundation, and attorney Tom Rens. Dr. McCullough presents the terrifying truth of the lies and harms of COVID-19 shots. He also reveals the inconsistency of mRNA batches. Some appear to be harmless so far, while others are deadly. It's imperative that all Canadians hear his testimony because our lives literally depend on it. Dr. David Martin from the US presented in the European Union Parliament. He spoke of the pandemic used as a weapon, unveiling the genocidal nature of COVID. Millions killed for profit. COVID was a state-sponsored genocide. I saved these videos, and I will gladly stick around after to play them for you. I encourage everyone to search Dr. John Campbell. He's from England. He took three COVID shots. He recently presented the excess heart deaths being unveiled and the unusual death rates occurring in countries like Canada. He also noted that the CDC admitted there's a link between the COVID shots and MS. Dr. Campbell interviewed Dr. Vivek Manichy. She also presents the alarming data on different Pfizer batches, reporting major side effects. Dr. Campbell said, "Had I been given informed consent, I would never have taken these shots." It's proven our governments knew these shots were maiming and killing people. They suppressed and censored crucial information that is costing people their lives. Robert Kennedy Jr. is the founder of the Children's Health Defense. They put forth crucial information using links right from the WHO, CDC, and FDA sites. Critical information that every health official and parent should be referencing to. Using CDC data, early 2022 states, "There are more than 1,000 reports of adverse events after COVID-19 vaccination in children aged five and younger. Because of the censorship and corruption within our governments and health services, uneducated parents are unknowingly harming their innocent children, babies, and fetuses, while governments stay silent." On February 27th, Dr. William Mackus's findings were published in a Global Research article, and I quote him, "My most important warning call on COVID-19 mRNA vaccines yet. Over 96 Canadian children ages 2 to 19 have died unexpectedly in the last three months. A warning call for Canadian parents. COVID-19 vaccines should never have been rolled out in Canadian children of any age. They must be halted immediately," unquote. And I also have printed off two copies for you. Dr. Mackus is from Edmonton. He's a nuclear medicine physician with expertise in radiology, oncology, immunology, theranostics, and targeted radionuclide therapy with over 100 peer-reviewed medical publications. Why in God's name have the experimental vaccines that by definition are not vaccines been given to our children who were never in danger, but now they are? Mayor Clayton, you informed me after my last presentation on this same deadly topic that you don't have a healthcare professional in your council. Therefore, there's nothing you could do. Well, now there is because I have a solution. I will bring Dr. Mackus to this council. I will bring back pediatrician Dr. Payne, who you heard speak at our town hall meeting over two years ago, along with other experts, because it is government's duty to inform and protect the people. We deserve and demand truth and transparency. And to councillor Bosch, you told me that council did the best they could under the circumstances, but I strongly disagree. Council did nothing. You didn't even ask to see the evidence I presented to you. I came before you, a very concerned citizen scared to death of what I was learning and witnessing firsthand. You did not remain unbiased. Instead, you outright ignored the concerns of the people you represent. And as a result, this community has lost hundreds of more people. These people who are our friends and families. You owe this community an apology, and you owe it to this community to do what's morally right. Because I'm limited to time.
I would just ask how much time you have. You've spoken for more than 10 minutes now.
All right, can I have five more?
No, I don't think so. Maybe two more.
Because I'm limited to time here, there are just two stories of COVID jab victims that I will share that were personally shared with me. 17-year-old Jasmine Combe, she and her family used to live in Valhalla. They moved out to New Brunswick where Jasmine went to high school. She took two Pfizer jabs due to peer pressure and to take part in her grad ceremony. She is COVID-19 vaccine-injured and now confined to a wheelchair. She bravely speaks out to warn others. Went to high school with Kim, her husband Colin, took two Pfizer shots so he could go to the Oilers games. He was a healthy, young, 49-year-old man. But three months after the second Pfizer, she found him dead in their basement. His doctor believed the cause was a blood clot. It's no secret, blood clots are a common adverse reaction to these shots. Sean Hartman from Ontario, a healthy 17-year-old hockey player, dies suddenly just 33 days after receiving the Pfizer shot. His dad continually speaks out and is still seeking justice. Why are thousands of young, healthy vaccinated athletes dying suddenly? Baby Alex from Washington DC required a blood transfusion. Parents begged their doctor not to give him COVID-vaccinated blood, but they did without consent. Baby Alex developed a blood clot that stretched from his knee to his heart. He died in two weeks. So how safe do you think the Canadian blood supply is now? Those that don't, those that know what's going on are terrified to end up in our hospitals, including me. Breastfed, five-month-old baby boy died the day after his mother received her second Pfizer vaccine to a condition called thrombocytopenia. Fetal death, premature births, and miscarriages are escalating.
Can I ask Ms. Martin what your request is of council today?
Absolutely. To conclude, my solution is not a demand, but rather a requirement. The information I have put in front of you must be top priority. Town hall-style meetings to take place right here in our taxpayer space. We will form committees and bring in experts to educate. We use our local radio stations to advertise our town hall meetings and mail out flyers with dates and times. As some topics may involve many people, we will use our government gymnasiums to accommodate an open mic to the public. The people must be heard. Let's start a movement here. Let's start a movement here in Grand Prairie to be a collective of caring citizens and work together with council. Invite our healthcare professionals, RCMP, teachers, school board trustees, MLAs, Chris Borkington, a rep from the LGBTQ community, reps from subdivision committees, and educate one another, promote healing, unity, and positive change that we all so desperately need. We will not continue to allow federal government overreach. We will not allow the World Economic Forum, the UN, or the WHO to dictate, divide us, and control our lives. We will not allow the Alberta Teachers Association to rob our children of their innocence using the sexualization of children under the guise of education. We will bring in experts to speak of the dangers of wokeism, ideological diversity, and inclusion that our young council has been promoting, that our own council has been promoting. Our children are falling victim to the ignorance of authority and society. I think this council can agree. You can no longer ignore the crucial information I have put in front of you this afternoon. People are dying, and children are being targeted. Our children are relying on all of us to do what's right. Your community is relying on you to do what's right. No council vote is necessary today. We, the people, have already voted. We are not leaving here today without your word to take this vital step and commit to our requirements. Thank you.
This is an opportunity for council to ask any questions if they have any questions of the delegation. I'm looking around. I see no one in the queue. Councillor Thiessen, you've popped up. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Blackmore. Thanks for your presentation, Dion. I appreciate your passion. I know how long you've been fighting this fight and speaking up where others might fear to tread. So you said in your closing that you're not going to leave today until you get, until you get the word that we'll work together with that. You also said in regards to your presentation, to set up committees and councils in different spaces to have these, these public forums. There's lots of opportunities to do that in the community already. So I just want to make crystal clear, what is the expectation from, from you and the delegation as to if council were to make a motion to look into this, maybe refer to committee or, or any other type of motion? What are you looking for specifically that we can do?
So first off, I would like to be able to, like, advertise to this entire city and get everybody into a gymnasium, have people come forth. I mean, I stand every Saturday on a street corner at what we call our vigil because people are dying, and people have so many stories to tell. They all know someone who's died or is dying or now has cancer or, like, it's devastating to hear all of this. People are scared to speak out about it. There's even doctors that are, you know, have told patients, you know, please don't get this. You'll die within an hour. You have so many medical conditions. Like, our doctors even know what's going on. So I would like to see the whole community be invited in to actually speak on this stuff. But have you guys help us? You have the resources to put that out there. I feel like the whole community needs to have the opportunity to come and express, you know, how they're feeling, and maybe they, they know people, like, what can we do about this? We have to stop these vaccines. They're still advertising them and are, you know, they're killing people. They're putting, I didn't even get through my presentation, but they're putting this mRNA technology in everything, the animals we eat, our kids' immunization schedule, and children are dying. Like, this isn't a joke. We need you guys to help us, come together and listen to these doctors. We have all kinds of contacts that we can bring in so people can learn and listen.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councillor Bosch. Thank you. I'll just take a moment. Just to your comment here, Dion, about people don't know. Do you, do you truly believe people don't know about your group who is trying to fight for your cause? You believe that people don't know. It's all over the media. It's all over, whether it's provincially, federally.
You mean, I'm, sorry, so on mainstream media, you don't believe that they're telling us that people are dying from these shots?
I don't believe that there is people who aren't aware that you're there. And if they want to talk to you, you don't think that they will?
I see. No, you would be unbelievable that diff, like, there's not a Saturday that people don't, there's someone who stops in and is like, I didn't know you were here. Thank you for what you're doing, literally bawling. I lost my, my mom, or, you know, I, my brother is now, like, totally injured. And like, it's, it's every Saturday. If one of you would just take the time to come and listen to what people are saying, it's heartbreaking. So, no, because mainstream media is staying away from this, like, why isn't our guy from CBC on the corner with me? You know, like, why? You know, like, why don't they care? They're not allowed to speak about it. There's this huge censorship, you know, that, I don't know if you're, if you guys are threatened on speaking out about it.
I'm sorry, but you're not at the delegation table. We have a very, very clear process that we follow, and that's the reason why we sit here and listen to the presentation. The presentation's given. We have the opportunity for questions to follow up afterwards. We may or may not choose to answer the ask questions. What our role is, is to try and figure out what the delegation is asking of us and then deciding whether or not we can facilitate that ask. My understanding of what you've asked today is you're asking us to help you message the community. And I think we've done that because you're here, you're, you're online, people are watching online, and they have the ability to learn more about what you're talking about. Ms. Martin, you could perhaps tell us where you're, where you meet on the weekend, and we can direct people to meet with you there. We can certainly facilitate meeting space, but it cannot be in this room because this room is for specific purposes. So can you affirm for me that that's what you're asking? You're asking for us to help you get your message out?
Yes, so number one, nobody watches these meetings, so I can't get that message out this way. And we are at the Cooperators Corner right on Main Street, and we present Dr. Mackus' work there. If we, if we had town hall meetings, then we would be able to put that out to the public, actually advertise it on the radio. Why is everyone afraid to talk about this? People are dying. Our pharmacies are still giving these shots, and people are dying.
I, I think you can understand that we don't control public media. If we did, we would be much better at telling our own stories as well. So I think you, you can understand that we don't control public media. We can certainly encourage public media to talk to you and to get your story, but we don't control them. We don't, we can't say, CGXX, go talk to these people. Because they would just say, well, you know, they have their own business directive that they follow.
Right, but if you said, if you, the city hall will put, or council, you guys can put the advertisements out on the radio, can you not, and say, this city is going to have a town hall meeting, we want to see all the concerned citizens come to speak on these, on this matter?
Okay, so that's a direct request. And as you know, because you've been here before, delegation business takes place later on in the agenda. So, you know, this is the point where you present and we ask you questions. Then there's a break in the agenda. We do other business. We come back to the delegation business. And at that time, someone on council can make a motion to move this item forward for you. That, that's how local government works. We, we don't control healthcare. We don't control upper level, levels of government. We struggle with those same things that you struggle with. So I, I know that you-
So we're just going to continue to allow people to die and our kids to be exploited by all this child sexualization that's going on in our city?
So we can move this forward at a later point in the agenda, and you're welcome to wait until then, but you cannot disrupt the meeting in, or, or be louder or carry on during a regular council meeting. But you're certainly welcome to wait for the delegation portion of the meeting. Or you can go home or go, go back to work or all, all of the things you need to do. And our administration will reach out to you after the meeting and let you know what that decision was. Okay?
Thank you.
So thank you very much for coming to present today. I know that, I know that you and the many people that you brought with you are very, very passionate about your cause, and we respect your passion, and we encourage you to keep telling your story. But this is as much as we can do for you at this moment today. I'm sorry, no, sir, no. No, sir, you cannot speak out like that in this room. You're certainly welcome to leave, but you're not welcome to raise your voice in anger in this room.
We just want your help. This is really, really scary, what's happening.
Well, thank you very much for coming today, Dionne. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
We have one other delegation today, and that is Ms. Saltman. If you could come up to the front and introduce yourself. While you're getting comfortable, I need to let council know that the matter you're speaking about is coming to a public hearing next month, next council meeting, which is two weeks from today. And so, Ms. Saltman, we can listen to you, but we cannot ask questions today because of a legal restriction that we face because of that. But please introduce yourself and tell us all that you can so that we can carry it forward two weeks, because I know you're not available on that date.
All right. All right. Okay. Okay, got it. Okay, my name is Angie Saltman. I've lived, I moved to Grand Prairie in 98, and I've been living in this city for the most part ever since. I'm an entrepreneur. I own two technology businesses. I feed and employ seven families in Grand Prairie and several outside of Grand Prairie. I'm pretty passionate about our community. I've been on the Board of Directors at Canadian Mental Health Association since 2011, and I've done a lot of Indigenous advocating, as I am Indigenous. But today, I'm not here to talk about that stuff. I'm here to talk about my local physical community that I live in. It's called Scenic Ridge. We noticed a sign a while ago, and it said it's proposed land use, bylaw amendment C1260. I don't know what it means, but I'm going to read it anyways because I think you guys will. And an expansion, and, and the thing is, it's for an expansion for a scrapyard located in Block C. Also, don't know exactly what that means, but I'm sure you guys do. So I was away, and I wasn't able to make it to the open house that ABC Recycle hosted, but I heard a lot of city councillors were there. I was away at university, and that's where I'll also be on the 24th, is I'm taking my Masters of Business Administration, and I need to be on site for that. And that's why I'm presenting today instead of at the public hearing. So although I understand that it sounds like it might be beneficial for the city for this expansion to go through, I heard that, and I, I don't know, I heard this, that the business, ABC Recycle, has proposed they will pay for a sound barrier. And some of you might be well aware that I've been advocating for that because my house, Scenic Ridge, and Scenic Ridge community is surrounded by an industrial park. And when I moved there over 15 years ago, the industrial park was silent. It wasn't developed. It was quiet. It was a big, the off-leash dog park was just a big field. I knew that was never going to be developed. And then there was like a junkyard that actually reminded me of my grandparents' farm growing up because my grandparents had a big junkyard, and we, we sold a lot of parts at our farm. So it has gotten really busy over time. And all of our community, you can hear the sound of industry throughout our entire community at Scenic Ridge. You can hear the sound of equipment working. You can hear their backup beeping. And it's all the time. It, it never stops. Sometimes it is pretty quiet at night, and sometimes it isn't because they do have trucks and deliveries backing up and, and, and stuff at the railroad tracks that are close by. So maybe at this open house, there might have been some chat about dust control and ABC Recycle paving some of their own property. You know, maybe there's more taxes from this business for the city to spend, and of course, saving money with, with not having to put up a, a sound well might be beneficial to the city. And I don't know if it's a good business or not, but I have been doing some research and reaching out to residential and business owners in our community to, to ask for their feedback. So here's some residential concerns that I have put together. So I'm curious if more industrial noise, dust, environmental pollution in the residential community is desirable to live in. And it seems like most community members that live in Scenic Ridge are not for this expansion. And there's a few reasons. Because we're curious if this expansion will make it less desirable for people to want to live in our community, and if that in turn will make our, the, the cost, like, devalue our residential property because people don't want to move somewhere that's really noisy. They want to move somewhere that's safe and quiet for their families. And I'm also curious if ABC Scrapyard is a good neighbor. You know, I've talked to some people who live right back-to-back with them, and it doesn't sound like they're a good neighbor to the residential community. Because they, they haven't done anything, like, why haven't they already built a sound barrier? Just curious if they were good neighbors. And, hey, I know you're not allowed to ask questions, but maybe I can just ask some questions and you don't have to answer them, but just something for you to take home and think about is, would you like this kind of business in your backyard? And you would, would you like it to expand? Would you like to hear the sound of industry in your backyard every day of the week? Now, there was a huge explosion from this scrapyard that shook our entire community a few years back, and it did an enormous amount of damage to one of the businesses in close proximity. So obviously, it's not safe for the businesses or for families with young children to have such a business in a residential back, like, they're expanding to more residential areas. So obviously, it's not safe for families or for businesses to have a scrapyard beside them. So I talked to BJE Industrial, Barry Edgington, he's the owner there, and he had a huge amount of damage from that explosion. He's also concerned about environmental. They're not, apparently not good business. ABC Recycle is apparently not good business neighbors as well, is not good residential neighbors. And, and Barry Edgington is also against the scrapyard expansion. The scrapyard, from a business perspective, because I'm an entrepreneur, and I've been an entrepreneur since 2010, I do have some perspective in the business world as well. This scrapyard operation is really messy. If you compare it to other scrapyards, this scrapyard is a really messy scrapyard. One time, I'll just give you an example, there was, you know, obviously, there's big piles of scrap, but one time, they had this big pile of scrap that had an ambulance on top, and the ambulance siren was still going off. So apparently, they're not following policies to, like, to make sure their scrapyard is, like, decommissioned before piling it up high. And, you know, sometimes these scrap piles, they look like 15, 20 feet high. It looks pretty unsafe, like, I wouldn't walk in there. So also, BJE has envir, huge environmental concerns about contamination into the earth, the noise pollution. I'm going off script, sorry, I kind of lost where I am. Anyways, he said it was-
Ms. Saltman, you're running out of time here.
Okay. Well, I was hoping that I'd get a little more time to be treated equitably compared to the group previous to me, so I hope I can go just a little bit over as well.
Keep going.
Okay, so one thing I, I'd like to question is, I'm curious about the environmental standards in which they operate, because obviously, they passed environmental, but did the business go beyond the bare minimum? You know, being that they're backed up to residential and commercial and industry. So I just want to question that we say no, we don't think the scrapyard is good for our community. We know you have a carrot that they'll put up a sound barrier and pay for it, and that sounds really great, but the answer is still no, thank you. Our community so far, seems most of us do not want this expansion to happen. And we think of industrial business such as a huge scrapyard really belongs a little ways outside and away from residentials.
So while we are not in position to ask you questions, I can recommend that you email councillors because that then can be raised during the public hearing. And I encourage you to encourage your neighbors to attend the public hearing as well. Even if they don't choose to speak, that gives you a voice at the public hearing that you, you have stated you cannot be at.
Thank you. Do I get a clap or something just because? Thank you.
So thank you very much. We appreciate your concerns, and we can talk about that in two weeks. And Ms. Saltman, if you could direct your email to the city clerk as well. Did you catch that? Okay. Can you email the city clerk as well when you email council? There you go. Perfect. We'll get it to you. So we're going to move on the agenda. So we're on item number seven, reports, and we will start with 7.1, board appointments. And so I would ask who to introduce this? I would ask Acting Chief Candice Billado if she's prepared to introduce this. We don't have a report attached, so it's difficult for us to introduce it. Mayor Clayton's hand actually just popped up. Mayor Clayton, did you want to speak to this?
Sure, thanks, Chair Blackman, Blackmore, sorry. I just wanted to recognize that council approved, recently approved, a regional branding committee policy in regards to working with our municipal partners in the MD of Greenview, the County of Grand Prairie. With that, the expectation that there will be two councillors, as well as the mayor, appointed to this regional branding committee, where we'll work with our municipal partners to talk about initiatives in regional branding, regional marketing, collaborative initiatives, whether it be promoting the region together. And at this point, the request is only that two, that the mayor and two councillors be appointed to the regional branding committee. That meeting will happen later in July, and following that information, we'll come back to council.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So I would ask if someone would look after the business for item 7.1. Councillor Bosch.
Thank you, Acting Deputy Mayor Blackmore. I move that council appoint Mayor Clayton and Councillors O'Connor and Berg to the Regional Branding Committee.
And I'm not Acting Deputy Mayor. I am deputy mayor. It's like, I am deputy dog for like four more days. So that motion is in order, and I would call the question.
Mayor Clayton in favor?
And that motion carries. And the next item of business is 7.2, Police Chief Ratification, and I would ask Chief of Public Services, Chief Lemieux, to introduce that to us, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. So I'm pleased to report that the Grand Prairie Police Commission conducted an extensive search for the Chief of Police for the Grand Prairie Police Service. They've been at it for a few months, and the requirements for the police, of the Police Act is to have council ratify the appointment of the Police Chief. The administration recommends that council ratify the decision of the Grand Prairie Police Commission to appoint Mr. Dwayne Lacusta as Chief of Police of the Grand Prairie Police Service effective August 28, 2023.
Thank you. I have a couple people in the queue. Councillor O'Toole, are you sitting there to do the business? Then I'll go to Mayor Clayton first. Are you there, Mayor Clayton? Because your hand is in here.
Yes, sorry, I forgot to unmute. My apologies. I would move that council ratify the decision of the Grand Prairie Police Commission to appoint Dwayne Lacusta as Chief of Police of the Grand Prairie Police Service effective August 28, 2023. And with that, I think the council needs to be very proud of the work that the commission has done to date, bringing forward an excellent candidate. This community is making a significant change, and it's something that we- Uh, this community is making a significant change and it's something that we need to be very proud of, the work to date. Uh, with this police commi- uh, Police Chief being in place at the end of August, he will continue on the approved timeline as, um, approved by council in the transit, the five year transition. And I look forward to Mr. Lacusta moving to our community and starting his initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and Counsel Bressi.
Great, thank you, Deputy Mayor Blackmore. I'll be enthusiastically supporting this. It's exciting to be having this next milestone in the commission's journey if council does approve this. I know that as we move towards police service, two of the significant concerns I heard from the community was the ability of a police service to, uh, address drugs and gangs and also professional standards of that police service. And those are two specific skillsets that Mr. Lacusta brings. He's got significant experience in, in leadership of very large organizations and large files in both professional standards and investigation and dismantling of drugs and gangs. And so I think those are just two of many experiences he's got. I think in so many ways, he's the right person to lead this new service as we form it. I think this will be a very good get for our community, so I enthusiastically encourage council to support this.
Good, thank you. Um, I have no one else in the queue, so I will call a question. And that carries unanimously. Next on our agenda, we have, uh, correspondence. So we have a letter from, um, Special Olympics. And I am going to basically read it because it's not a terribly long letter. Dear Mayor Clayton, the city of Grand Prairie has been awarded as the host of the 2025 Special Olympics Alberta Summer Games, which will be held July 11th to 13th, 2025. Working in collaboration with the Special Olympics Alberta, we will be assembling a Games organizing committee responsible for planning and executing the games, including making major games decisions. Special Olympics Alberta's vision is that sports will open hearts and minds towards people with intellectual disabilities and create inclusive communities across all Alberta. Hosting the Games allows Special Olympics Grand Prairie athletes to compete in front of a hometown crowd and brings awareness to the community about individuals with intellectual disabilities. This event will bring significant economic, social, and health benefits to our community through attracting visitors, community engagement, and competitive sport. We would like to extend an invitation to select a council representative to join the committee and attend all monthly board meetings and offer any insight they may have regarding the planning and execution of the 2025 Special Olympics Alberta Summer Games. And that is signed, the 2025 Special Olympics Alberta Summer Games Organizing Committee. Um, I know that this request has come forward, uh, to council. I see Counselor Bressi is in the queue and then Counselor O'Connor.
Yeah, I was hoping to do the business, but would you prefer I wait?
Uh, is this, is this a competition to do the business? Then I'll go ahead, Counsel Bressi.
I would move the council point, Counselor O'Toole, to the 2025 Special Olympics Alberta Summer Games Organizing Committee. I assume that recommendation came from the mayor and I think that's a great recommendation. I know that Counselor O'Toole's been very involved in past games and other sporting initiatives in the past. I also know that, that he's very passionate about serving people with disabilities in this community and has done huge work for that community too. So I think this is a perfect appointment and enthusiastically hope that council will support it.
Hey, that, uh, that motion did come up for us to vote, but we're going to redo There we go. And that does carry. It came up so quickly that I'm not sure everyone got to vote. Um, and then we'll move on to 9.2, Métis Local 1990 Correspondence. And this is in regards to the Elder's Caring Shelter. And if I could get my laptop to can agree, you know, to do what I'm trying to tell it to do. Okay. Uh, Dear Mayor and Council, as a follow-up to Métis Nation of Alberta Local 1990, Métis Local 1990, Presentation of the Public and Protective Services Committee Meeting Held on June 20th, 2023, please accept this letter as the official ask for the above noted land to be transferred to Métis Local 1990. The Elder's Caring Shelter Building is owned by Métis Local 1990 and we have leased the land from the city for the past 20 years. With the current lease having expired February 2023, Métis Local 1990 Board seeks to secure this land to support the ongoing efforts to continue building capacity and stability for the Elder's Caring Shelter. Ownership of the land and buildings will also provide opportunities for the possibility of future expansion to ensure the safety and wellbeing of our Métis citizens who seek low-income housing. And that is signed, Shannon Dunfield, President Métis Local 1990. We don't have any motion, um, for this. I would ask the CAO Miller to tell us, um, where he thinks this should go from here.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor Blackmore. I think, uh, a good plan would be to, uh, to have a motion to direct administration to, uh, review the letter, to review the ask and bring back a report to the appropriate standing committee.
That sounds like an excellent recommendation. Um, I would look for a motion from Counselor, Counselor Berg.
Uh, yes, uh, I would like to make that motion, um, that, uh, we send this to, uh, our administration to review the letter and, uh, come back with a report for, um, the appropriate standing committee.
That motion is in order. We'll give our clerk a minute to bring it up and, uh, call a question.
Mayor Clayton in favor?
And that motion carries. Um, moving on to, uh, item number 10, which is delegation business. We have, uh, 10.1, which is Ms. Martin. Um, and I look to Counselor Tieson.
Uh, thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Blackmore. Um, I appreciate the delegation coming in and speaking so passionately about stuff. And I believe that their ask was actually quite small by, by what we could do. So I would move that council direct administration to work with the delegation on the creation of a town hall style event and identify a space in which they could have it. Now, speaking to this motion, I'm not talking about funding an event or advertising an event. Uh, things, things happen, but I, I think in the past, we have created a space for these types of conversations for professionals to come in. Uh, our administration has set that up, uh, at the KMSC law area. It was kind of a small space to, to have those types of conversations, but I think they are important conversations. We can sit on one side of the fence and the other side of the fence and go to the other end of the yard and say, this is where we're digging in our heels. But sooner or later, we have to have mature conversation to get over the hurdles and to perhaps educate people who may be educated, need to be educated, or at least to find a way that we can operate better as a community together when there are so many diverse opinions about what is actually happening here. So, um, the purpose of my motion is to work with this group, but also to seek and try to create understanding in our community and build bridges. Thank you.
Um, that motion is in order. I don't see anyone else in the queue. Um, Counsel Bressi.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Deputy Mayor Blackmore. Uh, sorry, Counsel Tieson, I can't support this motion. I definitely appreciate that people have very strong, strong, um, opinions that they formed on both sides of this issue. And I definitely respect that there's people on all sides that are, that are afraid and I acknowledge that fear that, that people have. And I definitely acknowledge the need to build bridges in our community. I'm, I'm not convinced that an event like this actually would build bridges in our, in our community, but also more importantly to me, there's many groups that want to have open conversations about various issues and there's, and we're not supporting, we're not supporting those groups directly. And I think that we do have, at least not, at least not directly from a council, from this council table. We do have programs we run, we do have spaces that people, that people can rent. We do have various, um, committees that the city has formed that put on these events on occasion, uh, but I'm not aware of council directly saying, hey, we need events on this topic here. And I don't think this is one where I'm comfortable with us waiting in seeing as this is a provincial issue in my opinion. Talking about healthcare and I think that healthcare became a municipal issue when the province said, hey, this has to be a municipal issue or when it involves city facilities, city employees, but that's not the case right now. So I don't think this is the role of municipal government right now to be digging in here. And so therefore I can't support this motion.
Uh, Counselor Bosch.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Blackmore. Uh, I guess my question is, I don't have a problem with this motion. I just question is, and maybe administration can help me with this, somebody, um, how we go about something like this and if this door is open for other organizations, um, to have the same kind of treatment. I, you know, if the, if this is a new thing that we're going to do, um, albeit, and maybe we need to look into policy of it, if it's something that we're doing off the cuff as a one and done, um, we have to be careful because there's a lot of people in this city and I want to treat them equitably. So is there anyone that can answer, um, how we can move forward with something like this?
Am I going to ask CAO Miller to give us his two cents worth?
It's probably one cents worth, but thanks, Deputy Mayor Blackmore. I think, uh, along the lines of what Counselor Bressi said, I think it'd be difficult for us to differentiate between which groups we should offer support to and which ones we, we don't offer. If we do, um, set a precedence by doing this, then, uh, I think where do we draw the line? We could have numerous groups coming forward saying, hey, we'd like access to city space for, for this cause or for that cause. It would be really difficult for administration to, uh, to make those decisions. So, so we haven't done this in the past that I'm aware of, but, uh, I think it'd be difficult for administration to, uh, to get involved in a process like this.
Well, it, it really doesn't, uh, give me a set path because, you know, helping people is, I have no trouble with, but I just need to know how we can treat others as equal. Um, because I, I think everybody deserves a voice, whether it's on this side or a different side or a whole different subject matter. Um, and if, if there is no way the city administration can formulate a policy that, uh, you know, gives attention to this, how do, how do we move forward in a motion like
Counselor Berg.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor Blackmore. Um, for me, uh, I don't think that any group or organization is banned from renting any facilities in the city. So should they choose to go ahead and rent something, um, be it public or private, I don't think that there is any restrictions around that. Um, so I don't, I'm not necessarily in favor of it. And at the same time, I do respect what you're saying. I have had family members, um, and we've actually had civil decent conversations despite the narrative of division. And I have thanked them, um, because that I know that they're doing it out of love. Um, so, uh, I respect your position and I admire your passion, uh, because I know you're doing it out of love. And, uh, so it's not that I'm here to stop anybody, uh, rather, um, I think you, like many other groups in the community, uh, have the available space and the means to, um, reach people just like any other organization. So again, as far as I'm concerned, the door is open, um, and people are invited to attend should they want to. But again, that's, that's on your organization and it looks like you've got a good group of people.
Um, Mayor Clayton, your hand was up and now it's down. Are you out of the queue?
No, I'm good. My question was answered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Counselor Bosch.
Okay, thank you. Um, I guess, is there, uh, an option to have a friendly amendment? Um, what I would just ask is council direct administration to work with the delegation on the creation of a town, townhouse style event. Um, and I think leaving the space is up to the organization. But having a discussion and, and talking about how you go through a process, I don't, I think that's just open communication. I don't think that's asking too much of anybody, in my opinion.
Counselor Tieson.
Uh, no, I appreciate the friendly amendment, but, uh, no, I think that, that sort of misses the point and I'll speak to that, uh, on my close.
You can go right ahead with your close because there's no one else in the queue.
Hey, my mic's still active. That's good. Uh, so I've heard a lot today from the delegation and from, from around the table here, and I think these are conversations that we need to have. I think people, uh, put in a lot of time and energy and effort. I know that, uh, Ms. Martin herself, uh, this has been a three-year, three-year like challenge to try to get at least people that have the leadership capacity to, to hear and to help and work with her. Some of the things that I heard that it might be harmful, uh, one of the things that I heard from the delegation was that they would be open to inviting people from the LGBTQ plus community as well as doctors and people with professional opinions and anybody who might have concerns that they would be provided a safe space for them to gather in. Uh, the, the motion as I made it is, I'll just simplify it. I know that we, our, our CAO said that it would be difficult to do, but we do it all the time. We do it for walks, we do it for runs, we do it for different committees, like our food security committee, Toastmasters. We have big events that we give away our, our arena spaces for such as Powwows, Pride, and, uh, the Friendship Center, Grand Gathering are just a few that have happened. And we had no, no qualms with waiving whatever fee and having our administration work with them there. This could be a large gathering or a small gathering and I would really like to see the group work to see what kind of, of, I guess, gathering they might have. If we're talking hundreds of people, we might be talking about a bigger space. We might be talking about the need for security. We might be talking about other stuff as well. Um, if it's a smaller space, then it's a space to have a discussion and a presentation. But I don't think it's too difficult to have administration work with the group and see what their concerns are and what their feelings are and help them problem solve the space where that discussion or those topics might be able to take place in our community. So, um, for everyone who hasn't, uh, said yea or nay yet, uh, I hope I swayed ya, but I think it's time to vote. Thank you.
And I, I would just mention that there is no budget attached to your motion. So there's no financial requirements at this point. Uh, that motion, uh, is in order and the question has popped up on our screen, so go ahead and vote. And that motion was defeated as it is tied. Did anyone want to make a follow-up motion? See, there's no one in the queue, so we will move on. Although Ms. Saltman shows up as business, delegation business, there is nothing that we can do at this point in time with that. Um, we have no notice of motion. Uh, there will be no recess today, so we will move on to, um, council member reports. And I will start with Counsel Bressi.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, Mayor Blackmore. Uh, it was, uh, it was a busy couple of weeks with the police commission as we concluded the recruitment process for a chief and as I get to serve on the policy subcommittee and as we started convening and creating a work plan for that. I know I also got to attend an intermunicipal collaboration committee with Mayor Clayton. Uh, and that's an opportunity for representatives of our council and administrations to sit down with county council administrations, talk about, uh, mutually beneficial projects and how we can work together as a region. And again, I can't emphasize how good that regional relationship is going right now. And so thank not just the city people, but also the county people who are part of those conversations we're having on a regular basis. Uh, council got to tour the accordion care campus and it was really awesome to see our vision for a safe place for people to come and get medical care and social care and spiritual care and physical care and all the things they need to get, get to a place where they can be happy and healthy and independent. And I really think that space is going to be very conducive to the healing journey that it's created for. And so it was actually emotional walking through there and getting to know that we're close to residents moving from the trailers into that site and more residents having the ability to get off the streets and get into a better lifestyle. So thank you so much to every member of our administration and every one of our nonprofit workers who have been, have put in, and our private sector partners too, have been doing that construction, have put in blood, sweat and tears to make that space come to life. It was awesome to see. And the last thing I want to highlight is Canada Day. Holy smokes, did our staff and our various partners ever hit that out of the park this year? I ran into a family from, that's lived in several big cities and they're saying, and they just moved to Grand Prairie about, I want to say about six months, six months ago is at least when I first ran into them. And they said, move into Grand Prairie, they weren't sure what kind of cultural and community opportunities would be available to them. And they said that they've been so blown away since moving to- And they said that they've been so blown away since moving to Grand Prairie, but out of every big city event they've ever been to, that's the best free community event that they've ever attended anywhere. And I've attended a lot of events elsewhere, I kind of agree with them, there was just such a variety of things to do, there was such a good vibe of community members excited to see other community members, and it was so well-organized, and I was so proud of our organization for putting in that free event for our residents, and residents of other municipalities across the region. So, thank you so much to all of our staff members who had something to do with that.
Thank you, councillor O'Toole.
I've got a list.
Well, go for it.
Okay, first of all, committees and organizations that I serve on, the Alberta Bilingual Municipalities Association, we had a kind of a quarterly meeting, and it looks like things are going to be changing in the, with the administration. We've had one person resign, but that's all good, we've got replacements. The IDPD, which is the International Day of Peoples with Disability Committee, that'll be coming in November, and I'll have more information as we finalize some dates and activities. The Accessibility Advisory Committee that I'm on as well, same sort of thing, we had a planning, kind of, just to see exactly what we're going to do. I do know that for the chairleaders aspect of that, instead of doing a chairleaders event, and publicly produced one in the local community, we've got, what we are doing this year is taking past chairleaders and asking them to make a small, three-minute video on their experiences, what their ideas were when they were taking in this, and how they participated, to what the results were after, and see, you know, the difficulty that it can be to spend a day in a wheelchair. Also, the Decoy Community Hub Project is ongoing, and that's the Decoy Armories, and we're doing some fundraising, and we've got a big event planned for next year to support the project. Canada Day, once again, thank you to all the staff. You know, if it wasn't for Mike O'Connor cutting that cake, and Gladys Blackmore cutting that cake, and 20 of us passing it out, I don't know if we would ever got done, but thank you all, staff.
It wasn't hard.
I know, I'm making Mike's job, because he was pretty important. The parade and float, once again, I was left back because I don't walk as fast as I used to, and I had to walk, I think I put on almost six kilometers. But handing out candy and talking to the people, and, you know what, it's so nice to walk through the streets and see everybody in a good mood, the weather was great, everybody was saying happy, Canada Day, and they had smiles on their face, and then we went down to the park, and they all showed up there, so the place was packed, and that's what Grand Prairie's all about. The East Link Centre Triathlon Kid of Steel Awards. Nope, this was an ongoing event, it's been going on for approximately 15 years, I haven't got the exact date, but it's been pretty, pretty good. This is the medal that all participants got when they crossed the line, and I got to tell you, there was a three-year-old girl that she couldn't ride a bike, but she had a Strider, and she participated in it, and she, the last few yards, she was like she was shopping or gardening, looking at things, and not really focusing on the race, because she is wore out. She swam, she biked, and she had to run. But three years old and participated, this was the biggest thing that she's ever had to do, and it just shows that mom and dad had to push her a little bit, and I think some of us councillors there were pushing her, but she came across the finish line running, and that's, that was exciting. And then just another event that we took in was the Parks and Recreation, it was Parks and Recreation Month in June, and we made a little video, and we took a photo of council in different locations in Musco CP Park, and I've got some more there, but I think it's going to be covered, so thank you very much for the report.
Councillor Bosch.
Thank you. I think I would be similar to the three-year-old, I would be distracted long before I got to the finish line. For me, I guess the parade was the highlight, I loved seeing all the people, like, thousands and thousands of people lined up to cheer. I am super impressed with all the participants, and how well they decorated the floats, and the involvement of those participants, and of course, all the candy given out, that's great too. Then on to Musco Park, regional tourism, also a part of the festivities with the city of Grand Prairie, so that was nice to see, and the fireworks, of course, albeit the next day, but that gave us two days to celebrate, so that was fun. The other impressive thing that I got to see was the Coordinated Care and Campus. It is looking fabulous, it looks like a very healthy place to be, and health comes with not only nourishment and the people around you, it comes with, you know, a purpose and having something to do, to bring growth to yourself, so super impressed with it. And then, of course, the retirement for CAO Nicolay, we all attended that, and I think this is the time he's going to, like, actually retire, maybe it was number four or five on the list, but I think this is it. We saw the picture of the motorhome, I think he's going to actually take some time for him and his partner, so congratulations to Bob, and we wish you well, and that's it for mine. My committees are a bit on a hiatus right now.
Thank you councillor Bosch. Councillor Berg.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Yeah, my committees are somewhat on a hiatus too, we just had a brief council break, but I did participate in a couple of things. The campus tour was amazing, I'm looking forward to that being fully full and seeing what positive impacts that has on our community. But also the parade, I personally want to thank Mr. Nellis here for driving our float, because he actually kept a somewhat reasonable pace, it's the most I've jogged in a year, so it was a quick pace, but the thing is, is that it allowed everyone behind us to work at a decent pace, and as I'm jogging for much of the parade, I'm thinking of the poor guy in the band with the tuba, and how he's got to try to keep pace, so I haven't talked to him, but I'm sure he appreciates you keeping the pace at a reasonable level, so I just wanted to personally thank you for that. And so, I'm just going to keep it brief, thank you.
Councillor O'Toole.
I would be O'Connor.
O'Connor. Sorry, I don't know why your name doesn't stick with me, it must be you.
That's not funny. Anyway, I went to the Charles Spencer graduation ceremony, and that was very well-organized. Coordinated Care Campus, awesome, kudos to the staff, it totally turned out a lot more different than one I expected when we first saw the plans for it, so this is very, very professional. The Canada Day Parade, other than having such a phenomenal float, so kudos to staff for, I heard they designed it, and they built it, and Mr. Nellis drove it, so I'm still alive, so that's really good. We did two mock councils, one for the newcomers association with councillor Chris Thiessen, and we did the Champion Gym Summer Mock Council, and those kids, like, they just knock it out of the park every single time, they put a smile on your face. And then I volunteered for the Pirates under 13, under 16 fastball Pirates, and, sorry, I missed it. We didn't place where we wanted to place, but it was very well-organized, everybody that came in from out of town really thought the facility was very, very well-laid out, and kudos again for the staff helping that. And then the East Link Triathlon Kids of Steel, I ran into a gentleman at a restaurant afterwards, and he and his son had come up from White Court, and had nothing but kudos to say about the staff and how well it was organized, and he's coming again next year and wants to say thank you very much, this time he'll bring his whole family, so tourism comes in a lot of different ways, so thanks again, pass that on to staff, and thank you.
Councillor Thiessen.
Well, thank you very much Deputy Mayor Blackmore. Yeah, most of the events that I'm going to talk about here have already been spoken about, so I'll just add in a couple extras here, starting with the thing we did yesterday, which was the triathlon, great to see so many people involved, and talking with our administration and staff, they reported that registration was up 80% from last year, and that's all age groupings, and it was fully subscribed, so that's such a great, active event, where you get people in the pool, on their bike, and running, you know, to stay healthy, to build up their own pride, and to raise community spirit, was really incredible. I got to take in Charles Spencer Grad, where I got to see several young kids that I got to watch grow up throughout their lives, take the first big step into the next life of adulthood, and I couldn't help but feel a little bit weepy, knowing that next year I'll be sitting in the crowd, just like our mayor Jackie Clayton, watching my own child graduate school next year, so that's always really good to see, and sometimes it's not just the memories that make you wispy, it's the things that you haven't seen yet. The Coordinated Care Campus tour on June 28th, like most of council, I think we all were there, my mind was blown, especially by the community healing space, and how beautiful it looks inside, because it truly, truly looks beautiful inside. Our CAO, Bob Nicolay, that was one of his last stops around before we gave him his retirement papers, but he said something very profound to the group, and I just want to share it with everybody here, he says, "A lot of times, we think of spending money on spaces such as the CCC as being charity that we're giving to the community." What he said is, "I wish that when we make investments into recreation, and activities, and public spaces, we call that an investment, not charity, so maybe we should start thinking about how we invest in the people that we want to get back on their feet, we want them to become productive members of society, and we change the way we look at it, rather than charity, into an investment in our community, and this investment looks really, really good, and it's something I think we can be proud of, and same with the people who live there." Finally, Canada Day, like everybody said, was amazing, I think we've got this down pat, we've got a nice little roadmap that gets us there, where everyone has something to do, to have fun, and all that. I don't walk as fast as Kevin O'Toole, I don't know how that guy keeps up with the parade floats, I always end up about seven or eight floats back. This year, I actually caught up to him right by the college, but that was only because I hitched a ride on the dancers' floats, and just danced there while somebody else drove me, and then I passed Kevin, and I was like, "You're going slow, old man," I did cheat, yeah, I don't mind admitting it, but Kevin always puts us all to shame with, you know, how much gas he has in the tank, and how fast he actually moves, so it was a great time had by all, the fireworks were one of the best that I've seen, and the people who participated in the parade and came out for cake was amazing, and just, I know we didn't get a lot of love, but councillor Berg, myself, and Mayor Clayton, we're pumping out cakes at two to one the pace of all the rest of you, so you guys had to, like, beg for people to come to your line, that's.
Council tables not really the place to tell bold-faced lies.
Says the deputy mayor.
Mayor Clayton.
Thanks Deputy Mayor Blackmore, I apologize for my horrible internet service today. I don't have a lot of things to highlight that haven't already been mentioned, I did want to mention that I had the opportunity to sit down with Minister Van Dall prior to his Prairies Can announcement, it was a great opportunity to talk about projects and opportunities in our region as well, very proud that he, you know, opened an official Prairies Can office in Grand Prairie, where he highlighted the $9.4 million of Prairies Can funding for 23 projects, including one where the County of Grand Prairie is constructing a new multi-use trail that actually connects the city and the county, so that was a great opportunity to meet him, but also share our stories and to hear of the opportunities that are on the horizon. Also, attended a call this week with Public Safety Canada, it was a very interesting call, it was regarding the contract policing assessment with Alberta municipalities. As I was invited, I joined and listened, and it was interesting to hear the sentiment from our fellow colleagues across the province, who appear to be learning on a regular basis of opportunities, and doing more of an inner look of the assessment of their current policing models, so I found it a very interesting conversation. But last, but not least, I wanted to thank, well, I guess actually, I'm going to say two more things, I wanted to thank everybody involved with the Canada Day float, it was an incredible float, and from the graphics design person who designed the look and the logo on our t-shirts, to in turn, they sent it to facilities, and the float was built and fabricated out of the designs from the, you know, from our graphic design department, and really, it just was all succinct, and it all matched, and it was all themed, and it was all top-notch, so thank you to everyone who put the time and effort into that, it was really a great day, and to think that there was approximately 15,000 people out, I can, I'm proud to say that Grand Prairie knocked it out of the park on Canada Day. Last but not least, I do want to thank Deputy Mayor Blackmore, things have been extremely busy, including as councillor Thiessen mentioned, my eldest child graduating is a very special day. With that, I've been at many different events, and councillor Blackmore's schedule, as I can tell you, has been very busy, so I wanted to thank her, as she has her last few days in that role, if I recall correctly, I think next deputy mayor is councillor Berg, but thank you so much councillor Blackmore, I really appreciate your support in these busy times and the work that you've done. With that, that's all I have, thanks everyone, and safe councillor Blackmore.
Thank you Mayor Clayton. And for me, as Mayor Clayton mentioned, I did bring greetings from council and the mayor to welcome federal minister of Prairies Can, Honorable Dan Van Dall, at Senator 2000 to open the Prairies Can office there. I toured the Coordinated Care Campus, and again, I echo the words of my fellow council, it's been a very interesting time getting that building renovated and ready to accept clients, but I think that we are going to be really happy with what we see there. I attended a South Peace Archives Board Meeting, as one of my committees that I sit on, and we're still working hard to raise funds and get grants to enable the archives to move into Senator 2000, perhaps by, I'd say, another 12 months. Canada Day Parade, I did walk the whole thing, I did not keep up with Mr. Nellis. I eventually found myself quite a ways behind the East Indian motorcycles, and that was amazing that I was behind them, because they would stop periodically and just rev their motors, and do nothing except rev their motors and play music, but it's interesting to see what different ethnic groups think Canada Day should look like. I was, of course, thrilled to hear the North Bloods play that night, as everyone knows, I'm a big North Bloods fan, I thought they did a great job. I did bring greetings on behalf of the mayor and city council at the Grand Prairie Pirates' Minor Fastball U13D and U15D Girls' Provincials, there was 22 teams here for those provincials, two of them were from the Yukon, because Yukon doesn't have enough players to have a provincial game, so they came here, and the other 20 teams were from across the province, and they had spectacular weather and spectacular support, they did a great job. And of course, the East Link Triathlon Kids of Steel yesterday was a great, it was a great event, to see those little kids, including the three-and-a-half-year-old, all the way up to about the 15-year-old, running across that finish line, some of them looking like they didn't really have a clue what they're doing, and others were really quite gung-ho. And on that note, we are adjourned.